County Council to order. And with that, could the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Sam Crawford?
Here.
Kathy Kerschner?
Here.
Bill Knudsen?
Here.
Pete Cremmon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Carl Wymer?
Here.
Okay, and now could you all join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you all for coming here. And first off, a couple of house cleaning items. Please turn off your cell phones. If you will be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for office files. Thank you. On our docket today, we had a couple of things from the Committee of the Whole. The first was a discussion with Chief Civil Deputy Prosecutor Daniel Gibson regarding pending litigation Calvin versus Elfo and Jones. Is there a motion from the council? Councilmember Crawford?
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the county to provide a defense and indemnification for Sheriff Bill Elfo and Chief of Corrections Wendy Jones in the case of Donald Calvin versus Bill Elfo, Sheriff of Waukesha County, and Wendy Jones, Chief of Corrections, filed in federal district court for the Western District of Washington.
So we have a motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, since we adopted the motion, I'd like to read the following into the record. In support of our decision to defend and indemnify the sheriff and the chief of corrections, we make the following findings regarding the allegations of Mr. Calvin against them. One, Sheriff Elfo and Chief Jones were acting in a manner in which the county had an interest. Two, they were acting in the discharge of a duty imposed or authorized by law. And three, they acted, they each acted in good faith in the discharge of their respective duties.
Thank you, Councilmember Crawford. Second, we had a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding pending litigation Hurst versus Waukesha County. And on, we also have some minutes to approve, and on our minutes, we have three items. Number one, Special Committee of the Whole for September 10th, 2013. Number two, regular county council for September 10th, 2013. Number three, Committee of the Whole for September 24th, 2013. Move approval? Thank you, Councilmember Cremmon. We have a motion to move approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven to zero. Okay, for our public hearings tonight, if we could please remember these instructions. Audience members who signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first and asked to form a line behind the signs on either side of the chamber. If you were unable to sign up before the meeting, you will be given an opportunity to address the council once we've gotten through all the folks listed on the hearing sheets. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record and will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on an issue, we encourage the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the group. With that, the first public hearing we have is an ordinance amending the Waukesha County 2013 Unified Fee Schedule to incorporate a ferry non-payment fee. And on our public hearing to speak to this, we have Mike McKenzie, Reema Blake, and Jim Ross. Could you please line up behind the microphone? Oh, yeah, good idea to shut off your cellphone. Oh.
Hi, Mike McKenzie, 1983, Toddle Lane, Lummy Island, Washington. I need 262. I don't think I need three minutes. I would like to put in a plug for the Lummy Island Ferry Advisory Committee. In front of you, previously, we recommended in writing that you not introduce this ordinance, or excuse me, this amendment, and did as much research as we could on a quick notice, and you did introduce it. We'd like you to take our recommendation this time to vote no and not pass this amendment for reasons that we put in writing that I hope that you got last week in time to read through. I did just bring one anecdote with me tonight. It's sort of almost self-explanatory, but I thought it was interesting. I wrote and got a content from John Gibb, who's the managing partner of the Willows Inn on Lummy Island, or the Westshore Hospitality Group that owns and operates the Willows Inn and the Beach Tour Cafe and the Taproot Cafe. And I'm just going to share this as an anecdotal evidence that I think is loaded with the kinds of questions that lead to us needing to do more research and more careful examination of this proposed amendment, which from our point of view, the number one reason is because of the limited ways you're able to pay for a ferry fare right now is cash or a check on a US bank. In about the last 16 months, two peak seasons and up to now, about 3,000 vehicles have crossed on the ferry to go to the Willows Inn on Lummy Island. They've generated about 2.75 million in sales. About 95% of that traffic is from outside Waukesha County. John wrote me a note, I was going to read it from my phone if I can see it. What about, basically, it's what, how are you going to collect from a Canadian tourist who doesn't know that there's an inability to pay with a credit card? I can see that person departing with a bad taste in their mouth and never returning to Lummy Island for fear of persecution, not an image we want. That's all I have to say for you tonight, and thanks very much.
Reema Blake?
Reema Blake, 4275 Nisha View, Lummy Island. First of all, thank you very much for postponing the introduction, or the public hearing until after dry dock. We appreciated that. The ordinance, or the amendment to the ordinance is designed to address concerns about boarding the Waukesha chief without proper payment or valid punch cards. And everyone, we all want to make sure everybody pays their fair share. Public Works does, the State Auditor's Office does, you, it's your responsibility to see that happens, islanders who pick up the slack from any non-payment, want to see that. In particular, the Citizens Task Force on the ferry, in their recommendation that you received August 1st of 2011, they reported to you in recommendation nine, they called for an electronic ferry ticketing system that accepts debit slash credit card payment on deck, as well as collects and reports data through a robust database, unquote. The comments section of that same document states, quote, "No pay and underpay fares are increasing, and much of these issues would be solved with plastic. Explore electronic alternative to punch cards in the request for information. Consider crew time and environment constraints," unquote. And further in that document, recommendation number 18 specifically states, quote, "Do not institute a collections procedure for tracking and collecting from no pays and underpays. Implementing electronic payment on deck will resolve most of the no pays and reduce administrative staff time as well," unquote. So why this ordinance or amendment to the ordinance is being introduced now before any trials of electronic ticketing have been introduced makes no sense to me. The Ferry Task Force recommended against it in 2011. Lifac, as you just heard, recommends against it, and we took their letter to the Plick General Meeting last Thursday to the greater general public on Lummy Island, and they also encourage you to please vote no.
My name is James Ross. I live on Lummy Island.
Just into the mic.
My name is James Ross. I live on Lummy Island, 2544 Taft Drive. I'm speaking as a plain old person on Lummy Island. I'm not on any committees, but I've attended a few of the meetings. I read emails that go around talking about this issue. Basically, I don't understand it. I don't understand why the number, the penalty amount is what it is. I don't see how it'll be administered. And because I don't understand it, I'm against it, just because I don't know enough about it. I, I think there's, and if I knew more, it could well, could well be just perfectly acceptable. The second thing is, I'm an engineer, and to my mind, it's better, you're better off to try to get rid of problems in the first place rather than trying to do something about them when they occur. I think there's several things that could be done, both in, as Reema mentioned, having, making credit card payments, one of the possibilities, and the other thing would be that signage at the dock and the website, information available on the website could help people not have problems in the first place. The second page of this, of this handout shows the ferry website, and in the center on the left, there is a quick thing that says that cash and checks are the only acceptable payment, but it doesn't say anything about US funds only. If you look at the ferry fares, if you click on ferry fares, which is the next two pages, there's no mention of that at all. The only place I, or the place I know of where it is mentioned is if you click on Crochet, which is the last page, and there it does say US funds only. The sign at the end of the ferry dock has in small, in the same size print as the rest of the print, US funds only, cash and check only. But it's, I've lived there 11 years, and I've never noticed that sign until I went looking to see if there was such a sign there. And yes, it's there, but it doesn't stand out to me telling me that this is, this is the way things are. I've never seen any.
30 seconds, please.
That you do have to pay on the way across rather than coming back. Finally, I think there's some, there are committees on the island, such as the Ferry Advisory Committee and probably others around in other places, that are willing to spend a fair amount of time looking into what can be done, what, what things could be done to make it so that these problems wouldn't occur in the first place. And I would recommend that they be requested for their recommendations.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. Councilmember Brenner?
I don't even want to move approval to put it out here, but I will, I want to speak to it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move approval?
Yeah, that's what was my motion, yeah. But I'm speaking against the motion. I'm not sure how this, I remember the discussion when it was about having it, and we postponed it, but I, first of all, I never remember any council member saying, "We need to create a fine process." I do know several council members have spoken about, "We gotta, you know, make it easier for people to be able to pay," pushing the credit card option, debit card would be nice too, but credit card option. And I remember hearing somebody bring up a fine, but it seemed like it came from staff, but I don't remember anyone on this council bringing that up. And I'm not necessarily opposed to a fine if you had good ways for people to be able to pay first, but this is, to me, this is worse than punitive. This is a setup kind of thing. I don't think it was intentional, but I think it's more like a, you know, you're setting it up for people to fail who get on the ferry, and I, I don't think that's right. If, I'm totally fine if staff wants to create little paperworks of its own to write down the name and license number of people who don't pay a fee, and then look at it in a year to see how many people we're even talking about, maybe, but I also, I read the information from the auditor, and I must, I might have missed it, but my understanding was the auditor had issues with lots of things. One of them was making sure the cash, you know, is handled appropriately, which, you know, we're dealing with a lot of cash when you say you can only pay with cash or a check on a US bank. And it just seems to me that this is so much the cart before the horse when we wanted this. I mean, I heard Councilmember Cremmon say pretty, you know, vociferously, in a good way, about getting the credit card issue resolved. And this was, I don't know how many people do or don't know, this was supposed to come into my committee today and then have a hearing. And I said, "I don't want it in my committee. What is the point?" And I don't understand why it's here for hearing.
I think, I think Director Abart wants to inform us of something.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. I wasn't able to offer preliminary comments or anything related to this and where it all came from, but essentially, this has been talked about as an issue for a couple of years. And as you may recall, in the last six or eight months, one of the tossed around solutions was a machine or something on the mainland side, and after evaluating the costs and feasibility, I guess I'll call it, that, that got ruled out pretty quick. And so we moved to a different option where we're going to be following essentially the process somewhat set up for checks, bad checks. And so as we're reviewing that process, so you need to collect a certain amount of information, and you need to process it administratively, and then, of course, with a bad check, there is a $30 fee set in place by the county. So that's where the actual fee came from. It's, it's the same as a bad check. And so anyway, that's where this ordinance actually drew from. So today, you can actually go on that ferry today, write a check for $7 for your passage. If that check bounces, you're going to pay not only the price of the passage, but you're going to pay the $30 bad check fee. If you go on that ferry today and you do not have the funds to pay, there is no consequence, and we may or may not recover. There's an IOU that goes up. So as we're developing all of these processes though to make this all work, I want to make sure that you know that the two emails that I saw, of course, indicated that they'd really like to have the flexibility with the credit cards. Or within a couple of months of actually getting that full-blown, the Public Works Department has the flexibility, this is not a do or die, gotta have tonight, if you want to maybe put a, put something in there that says this will take effect at the time that the credit cards are fully functional, or something like that, it would be, we have that flexibility, I guess, is what I'm trying to communicate, so.
Great. Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, on a positive note, it's, it's encouraging to hear that in a couple of months or so, that you're going to have the ability to, to use credit cards. That's, that's very encouraging. That's positive.
Thank you.
I think personally, I'm, I'm against this proposal as it is, in view of the fact that in 60 or maybe even 90 days from now, we're going, there's, there's reason to believe that we'll be able to implement a credit card payment. I think it's premature to, A, institute a fine for, for this situation, and B, the amount of the fine is, just does not fit the, the violation. When you, you know, to compare or try to be consistent with non-sufficient fund checks that sometimes run into the hundreds and maybe even thousands of dollars, and be, and compare that and treat it the same as a non-payment of a $7 fee to get to and from Lummy Island just doesn't make any sense and does not seem fair. And so I'm, I'm going to be opposing this proposal, and I don't know if maybe Councilmember Kerschner would like to make a motion?
We already have a motion.
Well, I mean, to amend. We just voted down?
I think, I think Councilmember Wymer had a question.
Yep. I was just wondering, because we've talked a lot about customer service and running the county more from a customer service basis, so I was kind of wondering what happens if somebody gets on the ferry and they open their wallet and they only have five bucks? Or they open their wallet and they don't have anything? How is that actually dealt with?
From my perspective and my understanding is that that's where you would come up with the IOU type system that is pretty much in place. It's an honor system.
So are they like handed an envelope and they can send it back, or are they?
No, I think that, from my understanding, they have to actually come back and pay that, and the person will make a note.
That is.
It's a good idea.
Because it seems like, you know, if you're from Canada and you gave them an envelope, I bet you would get most of that money back. And it seems like that would be an alternative, and if you didn't get it back within two weeks, then maybe the fee increases or something.
Well, certainly there are auditor, state auditor issues with, related to gift of public funds and things like that, so.
Right, and I'm not suggesting we just let people be freeloaders.
I'm not saying it can or can't be done, because a process is better than nothing, so.
Councilmember Brenner?
Well, the best way to prevent gifting of public funds is get that credit card system up and going, add a debit card system to it, and if you had those up and going, you'd have less of a possibility, I mean, people wouldn't even have to put a stamp on an envelope. It's convenience, and it's what you talked about, user-friendly. It's not user-friendly.
Well.
And it's, we're working on it, but it's just, this just doesn't feel good, even bringing this forward at this point. And I hear what you're saying. We get all those other things up, I'll talk about a fee, that, I think that one's too high, but I would talk about.
Well, I just would like to add, in staff's defense, when I started to wade into some of the issues they were having with some of this stuff, there, to do this right, there are a lot of roadblocks that you've got to overcome, and until you get in there and realize all the things that are blocking this, whether it's getting mobile data on a consistent basis, whether it's adhering to the state's regulations for doing this, there, it's not as simple as getting one of those squares and throwing it on your phone and go, and press and go. So with that, I'd just like to thank staff for being persistent on this. But Councilmember Crawford, you had something?
Yeah, we might be moving backwards in technology on this, too. Have any of you driven a toll road lately? Did you notice all the toll booths are gone? You know, so I'm just kind of, I don't know where you're at on the credit card thing, Director Abart, but.
[inaudible]
I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, we're going to technologies, you know, I drive E470 in Denver when I go visit my relatives, and I get a bill in the mail. The people that drive, my relatives that drive it every day, that get the discount, multi-discount, they buy the thing, and, you know, no, there's no toll boost, there's no human contact, there's, you know, and I'm just thinking in terms of a ferry, you know, a lot of the things we've talked about over the years in trying to do the daily stuff with the ferry has always centered around the challenge of collecting tickets and fares and everything onboard when it's only a five-minute run. With a, with a front and back licensed camera system, you'd be out of that business, you know, you'd, you know, everybody that uses it would, you know, get a bill if they didn't have the chip.
Public disclosure.
And certainly all the Lummy Islanders would, you know, most of them at least would buy the chip and use that, and they would tally their, their trips and their discounts and so forth. So I don't know, I just, I throw that out there, I know, you know, that, that a system like that might be really expensive and work on a multimillion-dollar toll road and not be cost-effective for us, but I, it's just, we're really struggling with how we're going to do this credit card thing, and, you know, I agree with Councilmember Knudsen, and I think I speculated this recently in a meeting when we were on the same topic, that, you know, this isn't as easy as just saying, you know, "My business now is going to run credit cards." Doing that in this adverse location, under these adverse circumstances, and outdoors and in the weather, it's, it's going to be interesting to try to implement and challenging, to say the least, and I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be looking at the long term in terms of, are there other technologies, and I think there are, that would do this, and we could take out the entire concept of worrying about collecting the fare at the site?
After what happened with the red light cameras in Bellingham, I don't think I want to go down that road.
Yeah.
But Councilmember Brenner, then Cremmon?
I just, yeah, I'm all for all kinds of ideas. The bottom line for me is you, the last thing you put together is a fine ordinance. It's after you've tried every way to be user-friendly. And I don't think, I mean, I heard what you said about with the toll roads and all that stuff, but I'm not the most high-tech person in the world, and I would use a credit card. We still have to make things user-friendly. And these guys are onboard with the people for the whole ride. I know that sometimes those systems will go down, but most of the time, they work. I've talked to people on the ferry, when they're on the ferry, on their cellphone. So most of the time, it works, and it's, I think it's a way more cost-effective solution for everybody.
Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the suggestion from Councilmember Crawford, who's pretty tech-savvy, but to try to implement, I think implementing a system similar to the one that you just described is, is more geared for a road that handles maybe 50,000 to 70,000 cars a day rather than 3,000 cars a year or whatever, I don't know what the number is, but it's, it's certainly minimal, and I don't know if the expenditure would justify, would be justified for a fairly small number of, of crossings annually. If it can be done cost-effectively, it's something that we might pursue. I also like the suggestion from Councilmember Wymer about the, having these pre-printed envelopes and hand them out to the individuals that, that don't have the sufficient funds to, to pay the fare. But I think in view of the fact that there's reason to believe that in the not-too-distant future, like maybe by the beginning of the year, that we'll be able to implement a, an effective way to collect the funds via credit card and maybe debit card, I think that will satisfy the, the state auditor long enough before we get audited for the, you know, for the next audit, which usually starts in about July, June or July, and I think it'll show that the county is trying, in earnest, to try to comply with the, the wishes of the state auditor.
Councilmember Kerschner?
I just want to say that I'm happy to hear that it's going to be a couple of months and we'll have the credit card system in place, but we could have a credit card system in place. It doesn't have to be electronic. It can be one of those old-fashioned, slide your card across piece of paper, bring the paper back and process it the next day. I'm, I'm disappointed that it's been two years we've been waiting for this, and now we're looking at a fee for people who can't pay when they drive on. I went across the ferry yesterday, and when I was coming back, I was, I was a walk-on, and there was a car from Vermont, and these two young men rolled their window down and handed the ferry operator a wad of cash on the way back, and explained, "Here, we didn't have the money going over, but we got it, and here it is coming back." And, you know, people want to, people don't want to get a free ride, they want to pay, and we need to make it possible for them to pay and not penalize them for not having a way to pay for the ferry ride. So I'm not going to support this tonight. I thought about supporting it when we implement the credit card program, but I'm not going to support it then either. I think we need to give people a chance to do the right thing. People will do the right thing, and we don't need to penalize them for it.
Councilmember Mann?
I think we've pretty much got it figured out that we're not going to implement this until there's a credit card option onboard. I think that's completely reasonable. I think that's completely reasonable. If there was going to be a no, if you don't have the money when you show up, $30 would be way too expensive in my mind, just because, you know, the bounce check or the insufficient funds check, you know, that could be somebody, the $30 fine for that feels reasonable because there's a lot of paperwork involved in our end, dealing with it, processing it, maybe there's a fee at our bank for a bounce check, whatever. That makes sense. But for just not knowing the deal, if you're from Canada, it just doesn't seem right.
Or anywhere.
Or anywhere, Vermont especially. But if, so yeah, I would, I would, this isn't going to pass, so let's get the credit card thing in place and then let's, if we do want to have a no-payment penalty, let's make it $10 or something instead of $30, or proportional maybe to the amount that you're supposed to...
I'm wondering where the Vermonters got the $30. If any of you Lummy Island homeowners are missing $30 yesterday.
Please.
They probably went and used their credit card at one of the restaurants.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Councilmember Brenner moved to approve this, so could the clerk please call the roll?
Can I get some clarification? I think I tend to agree with the atmosphere of the discussion and will vote no on this, but I would like to say before I vote no that I'm open to continuing to work with Public Works to make these processes as smooth as possible. If the recommendation remains after we've tried the credit card system for a while that we have a situation in which some sort of penalty for non-payment, for whatever reason occurs, I'm certainly willing to, would like to see the council be able to entertain that in the future.
Yeah, I would echo that sentiment. So again, we have a motion before us. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Sam Crawford?
No.
Kathy Kirshner?
No.
Bill Knutson?
No.
Pete Cremmon?
No.
Ken Mann?
No.
Carl Wymer?
No.
Okay, that fails seven to zero. Next, we have a public hearing on a resolution adopting the six-year water resource improvement program. And this will be the council acting as the Waccaum County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. So please change your hats. I don't see anybody on the public hearing sheet. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this?
Pat?
Paula's hiding under her seat.
Well, Pat's here. Sure.
Nobody wants to speak to this?
Pat's not sure.
Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we're going to close the hearing. What, let's see, we have a staff report, I think. Do we have, Councilmember Crawford?
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of this. In doing so, I'd like to thank, well, just a hat tip, back to the old days of, what now apparently are old days of Councilwoman Nelson and Councilmember Wymer working to get this, I forget what you called it.
Corp.
Corp. This list of prioritizing projects. It has made our job, since this has been developed, a lot easier to put into perspective all the various things, the broad-reaching Public Works programs when it comes to stormwater and water issues. So thank you again to those who came up with this and to those who have made it happen.
Do we have a report on this?
Chris Bruski, Public Works. So I have nothing other than what we talked about in the Surface Water Works session. I'm happy to go through that again if you're interested. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve this. I just have one question for you, Chris. That property on Highway nine, I didn't see that on the list, or is it there?
No, so that was discussed at the last advisory committee meeting, the Flood Control Zone Advisory Committee meeting. We came up with three alternatives for fixing that, all ranged, I believe, $1.5 to $2 million. The advisory committee considered that and discussed trying to add it to the six-year plan, but there was insufficient support to add it to the six-year plan based on the votes that night. So it is not on there right now. Essentially, the, if my recollection is correct, the recommendation is to watch it through the winter. The, in the last high water, I know anecdotally from our field staff that were out there, it has translated downstream a little bit, which is what it's expected to do, to continue to move back downstream.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Anybody want, okay, we have, Councilmember Mann.
Just, we did go over this at length at our Surface Water Works session. Don't want anyone to think we're just rubber-stamping something this significant. We talked about it for a couple hours already.
Okay, so seeing nothing.
He does that a lot. He points that out.
Oh, okay.
It deserves to be said.
Yeah. Well, seeing none, could the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Now I'm going to open up for open session. During open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. If your last name is something other than Smith or Jones, please spell it for the clerk. Please make sure to speak into the microphone. Please stand behind the signs located in the aisles as a courtesy to other speakers. Thank you. So could we, let's get started here.
Karen Brown, Waccaum County, citizen. I just wanted to thank the council for getting the planning units started. And I know they're all anxious to get it going and get it working. Thank you.
Mike McKenzie, 1983 Tuttle Lane, Lummy Island, Washington. Very quickly, I want to go on record as a citizen, saying thank you to Public Works. And I want to go on record as a chair of Life Act, because we received some emails about what I'm thanking them for. Fondly known as Lake Lummy, it was a huge backup of water as you came off the ferry at the drainage point, I mean, huge, where people had to go around it or drown. I spoke some time ago with Chris, who's here in the audience, about that and he explained to me some of the complications out there of that because of where the drainage goes and it's hard to clear out and so forth. And his successor did the same and so did Mr. Ebar when I spoke to him about it. So I know it was not an easy thing to take care of and it's not 100% curable, but they did a good job of making that, you know, drivable. And it was a mess. I mean, it was a big joke on the island, Lake Lummy. I also want to say thank you to Public Works for implementing the ability to purchase punch cards, multi-write cards online with a credit card, albeit passing along the 2% fee or whatever it is. And also thank you to all of you and including Public Works again for moving forward on the beta program and implementing the ability for electronic ticketing on the boat, which we're excited about over the next two to three months, I hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to us at this time? Don't see a mad dash up to the microphone, so with that, I'm going to close open session. And with that, we have on our consent agenda a number of items from Finance and Administrative Services. Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had three items on our consent agenda. And all three of them passed with a 3-0 recommendation for approval. One of them is as the Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, so maybe I should pull that out and do it separately? Yeah, okay. So I will move approval of items one and item three on our consent agenda. Those come with 3-0 recommendation for approval. I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items one and three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. And now Mr. Mann.
All right, item number two is a request for the executive to enter into a contract between the county and Colson Environmental Services to develop and implement a stakeholder involvement process for development of the system-wide improvement framework for the NUCSEC River Levy System in the amount of $44,460. This is a recommendation to the Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, 3-0 recommendation for approval, and I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Councilmember Mann.
Item number one in other items is an ordinance amending the Waccaum County budget, the 11th request, in the amount of $13,300. This comes with a 3-0 recommendation for approval, and I move approval.
Okay, and do I see, no questions to this? This is an ordinance, so could the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Number two is...
That passes seven to zero.
Yeah, sorry. Number two is an ordinance repealing. Ordinance is 2009-045, 2006-350, and 87-19, which established petty cash revolving funds for Public Works engineering, road design construction, and ERNR. We recommended this 3-0 in committee and I move approval.
Okay, seeing no questions to this, could the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Mann.
Item number three is the Economic Development Investment Program, the EDI Board recommendations. We had a good long discussion about this in committee today. It's two projects that were recommended by the board and recommended 3-0 today in committee, and I move approval of both projects.
Okay, seeing no questions to this, you moved approval, so we have motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
And number four, a resolution on the matter of the election to receive National Forest-related Safety Net payments under PL 112-141. We approve this 3-0 in committee and I move approval.
Okay, seeing no questions on this, we have motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Okay, next on our other items, we have item number five, a request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Scott Van Dalen to the Waccaum County Appeals Board. Can I move approval for that one? I move approval of Scott Van Dalen to the Waccaum County Appeals Board.
You move confirmation.
Our confirmation, excuse me. I move confirmation of Scott Van Dalen to the Waccaum County Appeals Board. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Scott. And then next on our other items is item number six, request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Marvin Waschke to the Waccaum County Library System Board. Do I have a motion?
I move confirmation.
Councilmember Cremmon moves confirmation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Number seven, nomination and appointment to fill one vacancy on the Noxious Weed Control Board, District Four Representative Nicholas Kunkel. Do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Brenner moves confirmation, approval of nomination and appointment of Mr. Kunkel. And hopefully I didn't...
This was a council appointment, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And hopefully I didn't butcher his name too bad.
No.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Okay, we have three items on our introduction items. Number one, an ordinance amending the Waccaum County budget, 12th request, in the amount of $1,488,730. Number two, a resolution amending the 2013 Waccaum County Flood Control Zone District budget, fourth request, in the amount of $8,000. Number three, ordinance amending Waccaum County Title 20 zoning to correct errors and provide clarification. Are there any clarifications or wishes on these three introduction items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Okay, Councilmember Mann moves to accept. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes, any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Okay, other business? Anybody have any other business for us? Councilmember Brenner.
Just one thing that was talked about fairly extensively today in finance. I would like to see, even though it's not necessarily our direct jurisdiction, I would like to see a discussion set in time with the county council and invite people in the know from the city of Bellingham regarding how the, that Bakerview overpass area is going to be dealt with in the future. If, I mean, the fellow who spoke today, I appreciate that, you know, he can only say what he knows, but the important thing for me is not to wait till somebody comes and says, "I'm going to do it," to ask them, "Well, how are you going to do it?" We should have, we should know that there really is some kind of reasonable way to get this done. And that's the most expensive Band-Aid I've ever seen in what the state has done. I don't like wasting money. And to me, it's a complete, I'm shocked because when you look at that lane that they squeezed in there, that's only going to accommodate maybe five or six cars. And then you're going to have the same jams you already have. So it reminds me of what's going on at Main Street, Axton Road, when people are leaving, going east out of Ferndale and wanting to get on the freeway at Rush Hour or anything. I mean, after the first couple of cars, you're in a one lane forever. And I don't see this as any different. And I was glad it was discussed today, but it seemed like, you know, there wasn't, the person wasn't prepared for it because it wasn't really part of what we were talking about. So I really would like to see that as soon as possible.
Councilmember Crawford.
Not in our jurisdiction, I don't believe.
Not in our direct one. I said that.
It's in the city limits. In other words, you want to, you see a problem in the city...
That's going to affect county, too.
County infrastructure is going to be, is going to be affected according to their plan.
So you're talking like Pacific Island?
Correct.
Yeah, at least. And you know what? It wouldn't, to me, it's still, we represent the people in the city, too. And I just, I know it's not our direct jurisdiction, but I would like a little reassurance. And it seems like you are the one who brought it up today, and I was glad you did. But I want to have a real discussion on it with people from Bellingham who've been working on this. Seems like out of the kindness of their hearts and wanting to be a good jurisdictional neighbor, they'd want to talk to us about it.
Well, this is, would this be something that the COG would address, Councilmember Crawford?
Well, yeah.
And that would be a joint fashion?
I just, you know, there's a lot of issues in our cities, particularly the city of Bellingham, that we could say, "Well, there are constituents, too, so we should weigh in." I guess if this is that overwhelming. I understand the context that I was bringing this up in was we are, and already voted tonight, to fund using economic development funds, part of the stormwater treatment that will work with that neighborhood. I have no doubt if you really want the council to get a presentation from the city on their traffic planning for the area, that Brent, who was here today from the city, or one of the other, maybe the Public Works Director, would come in and do that. I'm just wondering about why we would, in other words, it would almost be like, if you're concerned about it, have a resolution from the county council, I guess, to the city council. That's where the discussion needs to take place. They are the decision-makers for that area. If we felt overwhelmingly that supporting their stormwater thing today was enabling a situation that was going to have negative impact on county people, then I guess we should have voted no on that. But I'm just questioning the idea that we're going to bring the city in here to talk about a city planning issue.
Councilmember Brenner.
I find your comments strange because we most certainly do have an obligation when it comes to all kinds of traffic issues that will affect county residents. We may not have a direct one, but we certainly have, okay, for example, the gentleman who spoke today, I said, "Well, you know, you keep saying it's acceptable under some standards you have." And I said, "So what level of acceptability?" And he says, "Level E," which to me, I think level E is sort of unacceptable anyway. But I said, "I don't even think with a straight face you can say it'll be level E because it's level F, that level Z right now." And I don't see this thing bringing it up to anything acceptable, what they're doing right now. So it's just, it's a big issue.
Yeah. Councilmember Mann.
I agree with Ms. Brenner. I think there is a clear nexus between our duties and this, the city's plan here. I don't, I don't think they would perceive it as rude. It's not like we're dragging them in here and saying, "Explain yourself." I think that's part of what the two jurisdictions should be doing more often, frankly, is communicating about things like this, and we talked about it at length the other day with our road engineer. What is going to happen out there? What are going to be all the other side effects of people trying to short-circuit that intersection, or go around it or avoid it? I think we have a legitimate interest in bringing this up with the city of Bellingham. There's others things I'd like to bring up with the city of Bellingham, too, as long as we're going to perhaps request their attendance or a presentation. Let me just say this.
Put a list together.
They've, I'm serious, we're going to, I don't know what the formal mechanism to request them to come talk to us about a topic, but I'd like to add the topic of their memo with, or their memorandum of understanding with Linden to do this water trade. I, I've heard from a lot of people who are very concerned about it, and I just don't understand it enough to know what they're up to, so I'd like to know.
Make a list, everybody. I just like to-
I am going to close other business, because it seems like we're dealing with the same business we dealt with this afternoon.
Oh, we didn't.
With that, are there any reports and other items from council members? Councilmember Weimer.
Yeah, the one report I have is the Lake Waccaum Policy Group met yesterday, and we had a two-hour presentation on the Aquatic Invasive Species Program, and how it went this summer, and what their findings are, and there's some significant policy issues that need to be decided soon. So they're going to come do that same presentation in our next Natural Resources meeting, at our next meeting, and so I would encourage people to attend, because we have kind of some conflicting policies in a way about whether boaters ought to be paying for it or not, and, you know, the geographic scope of the program, and we have a lot more knowledge under our belt now, so I think they can answer some questions for us.
Councilmember Kirschner.
I'd just like to give a shout-out to Victoria Dorper, who was the Executive Director of the Northwest Regional Council. She's worked for that agency for 30 years, and she retired in September 27th, so I want to thank her publicly for her service.
Councilmember Mann.
I actually do have a couple of reports. I attended the WACCAUM meeting. Our annual budget was approved, or recommended for approval, to this body. Modest, very modest increases. WACCAUM is what does our 911 dispatch for fire and police, and it's all integrated, and they've got some big plans for the EOC potentially moving forward, and we'll be hearing about those in the future, but there is potential for some serious upgrades to our telecommunications infrastructure as it relates to emergency dispatch, which we seriously need. I also attended drug court last week, because I'm just trying to get a handle on what some of our alternative programs are as we think about our jail. It was pretty interesting. Some folks had nine felonies that they were having as a suspended sentence if they can pass their drug tests. It was a pretty amazing experience, actually. I recommend anyone to go observe it, and see how our judicial system is trying to wrap support and care around folks who are really struggling with drug and alcohol addiction and other things. So, just, it was just good to keep the learning curve going, so that's my report.
Well, I have attended a couple of the Puget Sound partnership meetings lately. It's amazing to me how much funding there is available, and I'm encouraged that Waccaum County is, has an LIO to transfer some of that funds now. We have took advantage of that with some of the, like Canyon Creek and some of these other projects, we've got some funding for. Hopefully, we can take advantage of some of the other things that the partnership has coming up, as there is a lot of funding to deal with stormwater issues and flood issues and the current proposal that they have, that state legislation passed, so I'm encouraged that we'll get some funding out of this, and hopefully we can get some stuff done. Councilmember Brenner, any reports?
Well, this is, I just want to send, I'm sure, everybody's sympathies to Debbie Bailey. She works at the, in Public Works, she does the Solid Waste Division. Yeah, I read it. It was a horrible accident she was in, and she is one of the nicest people I know. I work with her, I've worked with her for years, because I've been on that Solid Waste Advisory Board quite a bit, and it just, it's so shocking, and she's so wonderful, and I, I sure hope she feels a little bit better soon.
Councilmember Cremon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, attended the reception honoring Victoria Dorper, the outgoing Executive Director of the Northwest Regional Council, who actually has been employed there for 36 years, did a stellar job, and she will be missed, and she will be very difficult to replace, and she did an excellent job for the region. I attended the planning unit meeting, the first initial planning unit meeting, I think it was last week, if I'm not mistaken, early last week, and it was, it was encouraging to see a large turnout, on the positive side. There was a lot of interest, a lot of the stakeholders were represented, there were one or two that were not, and hopefully they will be in the future, and there was a, in my opinion, more than expected attendance from just interested individuals, citizens from throughout the community. But I have to say that I was significantly disappointed in the facilitation of the meeting. I thought that more could have been accomplished. I don't think it was as productive as it could have been, and I'm a little concerned that those were in attendance with high hopes and great expectations of rejuvenating that, that body. I'm just a little concerned that, at the end of the evening, many or some of the individuals that attended in a official capacity, representing their respective organizations, may have left the building a little dejected or disappointed that their, their expectations prior to the meeting may not be met. And I'm, you know, I know that, that the executive is, has been made aware of it. I've had a discussion with the executive and his staff, and I know that a couple of other council members sitting up here with me have also expressed, the other two council members who attended the meeting, council members Mann and Brenner, all were in lockstep and unison in our, our takeaway from, from the facilitators that were hired to, to run the meetings. But I will try to remain positive, and I'm hoping in the future, the upcoming meetings will be more adequately facilitated and more productive and effective, so that, we'll, we'll see if that comes to pass.
Councilmember Crawford, anything to add?
No, on a side note, I, but I, on a side note, I just did a little trip around the Northwest and noticed that in Montana, if you're outside of a city, incorporated city, you don't need a building permit, and the reason I know that is because every town, and we did a lot of driving, we did over 1,500 miles in a few days, in every single town, you see a sign when you go into the towns saying, "You are entering an incorporated city, building permits are required in the towns." So, what a different world than where we live today.
Yep. Okay, seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.